All right, everybody, why don't we go ahead and get started. Vice Mayor Snyder is going to be running a little late. He's had a work issue come up this afternoon, so he should be joining us shortly. So, we've got a pretty heavy agenda. My goal is to try to keep us on schedule tonight.
Yay!
So, I hope everybody heard that. So, we're going to run according to the time slots that we have. My anticipation is that on the stormwater issues, that it's pretty dense materials. So, we'll see how it goes, but we may need to break this out a little bit and figure out how to move forward on this, given the technical issues that are involved and the importance of it as well. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, members of council. The, on tonight's agenda, we have three items. The first three items on the agenda are all related to stormwater. And so, Jason will take the lead in presenting the first and the third, and I will talk briefly about the second. So, starting with the Stormwater Regulation Ordinance, this is something the council has expected and known was coming ultimately for your decision. We have until April technically to enact these new state mandates for more stringent stormwater controls associated with development and redevelopment in the city. So, a couple of key things that we'll communicate is that, yes, this is a state mandate, so we must do this, but we're taking the opportunity to streamline some operations in our code. And also, there are a few items of local discretion that we'll want to highlight for the council in this discussion. As the council will recall, the Planning Commission has been very interested in the 35 percent impervious coverage rule. Now, under the new state regs, there's no such thing as a hard cap. It is meant to be an engineering issue where you treat phosphorus for water quality. So, the second item is to have the discussion about keeping the 35 percent hard cap on impervious surface as a zoning matter and enforced by the zoning administrator. And so, we'll talk about that one after we've gotten through the stormwater regulations themselves. And then, lastly, a request to council to create the task force to develop our credit policy. So, Jason Widstrom, our civil engineer in charge of stormwater, will take the lead in the presentation. And of course, we are joined by David Bulova of AMAC, who's been instrumental in developing our watershed management plan, our water, stormwater utility, and now helping us draft this ordinance that would carry out state policy. So, Jason, if you could take it from there. We've got a few slides on this, and of course, any questions, we can stop and answer questions as we go.
Thank you, Wyatt. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. It's my pleasure tonight to present to you the proposed ordinance for stormwater. As Wyatt mentioned, many of the elements of this ordinance are mandatory, so there is a timeline associated with doing some of those. We also have some other pieces of this that are about streamlining existing processes. And I'll say through David's hard work over the past few months since the model ordinance came from the state, they've looked at our ordinance and thought, wow, that should be the model ordinance. So, I'm really excited about bringing this forward tonight. So, should we hit the lights or canoe? So, it's important to start with the timeline associated with this. What we're thinking here is that next Monday would be the first reading, so that we can get this out for public input. It's really dense, as the mayor said, and there's a lot of small aspects of it that, you know, should be reviewed by different groups, with a hopeful second reading in October. And this will, if we do that, that would be based upon our current authority to modify our regulations. And I can go into that a little bit more in detail later about why we would want to do that. But the state does require us to give them an ordinance in December and then adopt an ordinance in April, so that it'll start in July 1, 2014. So, it is a lot of material, and so what I've tried to do here is break this into four key tasks. And so, here I've outlined really what I was kind of saying about reorganizing our existing regulations, adopting some of the new state mandated materials, and also addressing some issues with the illicit discharge regulations that we currently have. So, the first of which, going into tonight, is more of a housekeeping effort here to create Chapter 35, Stormwater. And this would be done out of two different areas, the first being Chapter 48 zoning. So, we'll take the Chesapeake Preservation Overlay District, we'll move a lot of that material over to stormwater where DPW will be the overseeing group. Right now, that's with the zoning department, and they actually defer to us on pretty much every aspect of the Chesapeake program with respect to stormwater. So, it makes sense to move that. And since we're doing that, we're going to take Chapter 14, Environment, where we have our erosion sediment control law, and roll that into Chapter 35 with some modifications to meet the state mandate. The other structural change, and this is coming from a mandate, is to create language for the Virginia State Stormwater Management Permit. And this is, I can go into this a little bit more detail later. So, we have to do that, and then also to create the illicit discharge language. So, before I can really get into some of the criteria for stormwater, it's important to talk about phosphorus here in the city and in general. And so, it's commonly thought that phosphorus comes from runoff, and that can be from fertilizers or pesticides. As you see here, it can also come from soil, loose soil that we have on the ground and from rocks. A lot of the pollution that we get comes from the atmosphere. And so, when we have impervious cover, obviously, water's going to run off that. It's not going to seep into the ground naturally. And so, this is really great for the algae that we have in our water bodies, because they love phosphorus, they grow, and they take up the valuable nutrients that our animals and microorganisms need in the water. So, Falls Church has been more in the model here of the left bottom corner, about 35% to 50% impervious. And you can see what the difference is, is in a natural ground cover situation, you have 10% runoff. In this case, we've got about 30%. So, that's a three-time fold natural phosphorus that we're giving to our streams and ultimately Chesapeake Bay. So, what that does is, and this is from a study at the state, is that the more impervious cover you have, the less likely your water body is going to have life in it. And that's what this model shows, and you can kind of see, as you get down towards the 15 and below area, is kind of where the grouping grows up, goes up. So, the proposed water quality standards that I'm bringing forth tonight is a little bit different what the state has on there, and I can explain why, but it models pretty much what they're requiring, is that we would put a 20% reduction of phosphorus on redevelopment of all non-single-family developments. So, these are our larger commercial sites in general. What we would do with the single-family homes, we would model it somewhat similar to the way that we handle them now, is that they have a 35% cap. Well, that 35% can equal a certain loading rate. It's not .41, but I'll get to that. Instead, change that over to a numerical criteria, lower that to .41, so that all construction, whether it be a knockdown and rebuild, or a new home on a new lot, or an empty lot, they'll still meet the same criteria. But by doing these small tweaks in the way that it's laid out, we do have to go before the Soil and Water Conservation Board and defend our position. I think it's a very defensible position about what I've laid out here, and I can show you a little bit more detail what this means. So, here we have an existing home, and this is a common example that we see today. So, most of the homes that I see knocked down here in the city, and this is from a sampling that I took, they're roughly between 18 and 22% impervious cover for their lots, which generates about .5 pounds of phosphorus a year. And what somebody can do now under our current stormwater is knock that down, build it up to 35%, and not have to do a thing. And so, the loading from that is somewhere between .15 and .16 of phosphorus. So, you can see we're increasing impervious cover, we're going to increase the loading rate on our streams, and that's by our current standards. What this ordinance does is it takes that same existing 18 to 22, and it says, they're going to meet a .41 standard, and they're going to do that by collecting the runoff by some sort of best management practice. And here, I just demonstrated that a rain garden could possibly be that, there's cisterns, infiltration galleries, so a whole suite of things that you can do to treat. In talking with some of the developers that have worked around the jurisdictions, not everybody has 35%. They have lower standards, and they use these best management practices. They roughly cost between $7,000 to $10,000 to install. And so, this mandate from the state is across the state. And so, these redevelopments, whether we do a 20% reduction or a .41 standard, will be universal across the state. And so, this really doesn't put it at a competitive disadvantage with anybody else. This is the new stormwater regulations that people are going to have to adopt. So, the other piece of the development criteria is the water quantity standards. So, a lot of times we talk about for the Chesapeake Bay, and this is more your flooding issues. And in my opinion, this is a welcome change. Civil engineers throughout the, or should I say, stormwater engineers have looked at the current standard, which is minimum standard 19 out of the erosion and sediment control law, and saw that it had some gaps in it. And what they've done, the state has closed those loopholes, and it really does give me the tools that I need to govern quantity in the city more effectively. So, as you can see here, it's really focused on reducing the amount of volume and peak flow running off of sites when they're redeveloped, and also encouraging reduction in stormwater volume through onsite infiltration practices. So, the two standards that I've discussed here do have a grandfathering clause, and the way that it's set in the ordinance today, it says that if we adopt this by April 1, like the state requires us to, and enact in July 1, anything that's come out with a plan and submitted here to the city would get the old standards. And so, I actually pulled out the language from here, but it's, we have a little flexibility here to tweak that date, to set that to where we see it's best suited once we adopt this ordinance. So, if it takes effect, let's say arbitrarily sometime in October, I think it's the 22nd, sites like the Tenner Hill, the larger sites that we have, those will not have to meet this new regulation, because they've come in with plans already, even though they're not approved, just having that original proposal grandfathers them. And so, we're really looking at projects that we probably haven't even heard of yet that would be affected by this. The benefit to doing that is that if we allow more impervious cover to come into our city like I showed you earlier under the old standards, what we actually have to do is we have to mitigate that difference later on for the TMDL. And so, for every pound that I allow additionally in the city under the 35% cap, I have to take that pound away, and if it's, I think our price on a pound per acre was like $100,000, is what it costs us to do those structural practices. So, there's a cost associated with not doing this earlier.
And just one note on that. I mean, we are trying to adopt this ahead of schedule, and we would recommend the council adopt it ahead of schedule as well. But the question had come up in the past, can we act in such a way as to make sure that the large projects that have gone through a process are covered by the higher standards? And if we had adopted this ordinance six months ago, or maybe even eight months ago, arguably under this statute, they would have already been grandfathered, because they came in with a conceptual plan under the old regulations. It appears that in the General Assembly, this was a significant point in the developer community, and so it spelled out rather clearly, I think, in the state code in terms of the grandfathering status, even at the conceptual stage.
So, the ordinance also provides some procedural changes here at City Hall. The first one I've mentioned here is the creation of a stormwater management permit. And then, what this does is it creates a one-stop shop for stormwater. Instead of somebody having to come in and looking at the erosion and sediment control law, looking at the Chesapeake Bay, looking at the urban forestry's requirements, they just look under stormwater, they get a stormwater permit, it's run out of DPW. The way it's laid out, just the ordinance itself, is very clear. You start, what is a permit, what are the requirements under the permit? They're all listed very plainly right there. So, it gives developers a very clear and concise understanding of what they have to do when they come to the city. The second change that we've done here is because the stormwater permit encompasses a larger area than just Chesapeake Bay, we've renamed that group, although the body will do basically the same thing, to the Stormwater Management Review Team. And what this does is that, since it has a larger scope of work under the permit, it allows for a wider amount of public input on development here in the city. This group is now an advisory to the Director of Public Works versus having actual approval power. And that was done because there needs to be a little bit of flexibility because of the wideness. And so, by doing that, the appeals process is now, it goes from, instead of it being the Seabird Group to the Planning Commission, it goes to the Director of Public Works, to the City Manager, to the City Council.
There's that definition on that Common Plan of Development that actually is fairly important as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Sorry, I skipped that one. We've also defined Common Plan of Development, and we've taken the state's language and we've modified it to basically solidify a current practice that we have here in the city. And the reason to do this is, right now, under our current rules, if you disturb 2,500 square feet, it's pretty plain you have to get a permit, you have to get a grading plan. If you disturb just less than that, do your project, and then come along a little bit after that and do more on that project, you can piecemeal your way around the rules. And so, what we've said in DPW is that if you get a grading plan with us, or you do a project, it has a two-year lifespan to it. And if you continue to try and piecemeal around that, we'll come back and say you need to meet the 35% rule, so we're not just ad hoc increasing our amounts of impervious. So, what this does is it solidifies that, and says, over a three-year period, if you do work here in the city, the aggregate of that work will then trigger that 2,500 square feet, so you can't get around it. The thought here is that because the criteria is a little bit more onerous on somebody redeveloping, that's probably going to happen a little bit more, and so, we've tried to set that up. That obviously is up for discussion. We added that to the state standards, and we've spoken with them about whether we have the authority to do that, and I think David can maybe speak to that a little bit more later, if you want to talk about it. But I put that up there for you to consider, but I think it's an important piece. I don't know if you had anything to add?
Except that Common Plan of Development is something that a lot of localities are struggling with, and what does that really mean? And so, at this point, I think the City of Falls Church is kind of ahead of the game in terms of being very concise about what you all anticipate Common Plan of Development means. You know, I think we'd want to make sure we work very closely with DEQ to ensure that that passes muster with respect to their review, but I think all it does is put a finer tip to something that is very broadly defined and needed better defining anyways.
The third piece of the three points I was trying to discuss tonight, yes?
Can I just speak a little more?
Sure. I'm sorry. The third piece is the Virginia Stormwater Management Program, general permit. And so, what this is, is a state mandate for the city to take over administration of this permit, starting July 1. And this is a shift to the city to streamline permitting here, and the best way to explain this is by example. And so, if the Tenner Hill development came in tomorrow and we were running this program, I'm sorry, forgive me, if Tenner Hill came in tomorrow with an approved plan, they would have to go to the state, because they're over one acre, and get a special permit. Many of the elements of that permit are the same things that we review here for a site plan. And so, you've got dual organizations reviewing basically the same things. There's a little bit of tweak about, for example, if somebody has a diesel generator on-site and they're going to keep fuel there, they have to think about that. We don't typically do that. So, it's very similar to what we do now, and since we're going to be reviewing it, the state also has oversight from a much higher level to make sure that we're doing it right. And so, there's a small fee that the state will collect. They did give us the authority to tack on a little bit additional fee to get cost recovery for what we do here, and that can be rolled into our current development fees. That, again, is up for discussion, how we want to do that. But this is something we have to do, and the language is there to enact in July 1. And the fourth piece is the illicit discharge regulations. And this was identified as a top priority in our watershed management plan, and we're currently relying on relatively weak authority under Chapter 34 of Solid Waste. And so, this really puts a fine point on what is an illicit discharge and how are we going to regulate those? And it says, pretty much, everything but stormwater is an illicit discharge if you put it in our storm sewer system, with the exemption being water from a firefighting So, with that, I'd just go back to the timeline that we originally started with here, is that we're looking for our first reading next Monday, seeking public comment from the different boards and commissions, with a second reading in October, based on our current authority to make our stormwater regulations currently a little bit more stringent. That helps us in the long run for some of the Chesapeake requirements for TMDL that I mentioned earlier. But we do have some time with that, where we can submit to the state on the normal deadline with an adoption in April. So, with that, I'm sure you have plenty of questions. I'd be happy to answer anything you have.
Why don't we just go around?
Okay, thanks. The point of my question is going to be to talk about, or ask about, the situation that you outlined on page, that you display on page 10, and the process that we go about to deal with it on page 12. And thank you, by the way, for your detailed presentation. So, and to which you speak in lines 531 and on in the document, and it's the process. So, all right, if somebody wants to do what's displayed on page 10, notification goes out to the neighbors within 150 feet of that disturbing activity. Interesting way to put it, of that activity. And what happens? And explain to me the way that the new SMART group relates with the BZA also. If there is dispute in the neighborhood about what's being proposed, the rain garden's not big enough, we don't want a rain garden, we want a trench. Just speak in layman's terms through how that is going to work, if you could.
Sure. This is not dissimilar to the way that we currently do grading plans here in the city. The Seabird team, which would be taken up by SMART, does the exact same thing as it does today, just under a different name. So, we notify people within 100 feet, they show up to a meeting, we talk about all of the control measures that are on the site about stormwater quantity and quality. Typically, the homeowners adjacent to it are concerned about additional runoff, so we talk about where swales might be, are they meeting the 35% requirement, if they have some sort of best management practice because of water concerns that are out there. And that typically is the first time that we hear from owners unless they have a very nice developer, who some of them actually go out and knock on doors ahead of time before even submitting a plan. The way that this is different is that that group is now advisory to the director. At that meeting, for a plan to get there, it's typically been approved by the members of Seabird, because we don't want to bring forward a plan that's half-complete. We want to bring a good plan forward, and it's more of an informational session. The way I view this now is that, since it is advisory, the director can take the input from the members of SMART, as well as the community, and say, does this plan need additional work? These homeowners are really concerned about stormwater. Is there something you've overlooked? Please take another look. So, it provides more flexibility, the way I see it.
Okay. And explain to me, then, how the BZA works into the process, if it does?
So, the BZA would be looking at zoning issues. The SMART group is solely about stormwater, and I know you can see there's some overlap through the discussion that we're going to have after. But by moving this to a water quality performance criteria of .41, it's not really about how much impervious cover somebody has on their lot, it's about how they treat stormwater from their lot. So, that is why I kind of hit on before, by moving this out of the zoning ordinance, it becomes a water quality criteria number, and if you like a zoning number, that can certainly happen, but that will happen outside of stormwater permitting.
Okay. All right, I'll study up a little more on that. The only thing I would ask is, is the 150-feet notification, is that, you know, a state standard or a national standard? I mean, my lot, I think, is 75 feet wide, which means that if something were to happen on my lot, you know, 150 feet's not that far, really. It's just that, basically, the two or three properties immediately nearest to me. Is there any way we could expand the notification range beyond 150 feet to include, you know, a bigger number?
Yeah, we actually, the original language from the state in their model ordinance had no distance whatsoever. We actually asked David to insert our current practice of 150 feet. We could easily jump that.
Okay. I'm just thinking, you know, when we hear, when we've heard from people about situations that have come before the BZA, it's usually a group that must be larger than 150 feet, because there seems to be more community interest. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, a couple of questions for you. One, how is anybody other than an expert able to make determinations about plants and the like? In other words, how can any lay group know that a rain garden is adequate for, you know, a site? In other words, it seems like an expert really has to weigh in on the adequacy of any plan, and laypeople really aren't qualified. I mean, I don't know if I'd be qualified to tell you, well, this rain garden doesn't work right, or it's not big enough, or, I mean, how does these groups play in with the fact that it seems like expert knowledge is required to really ultimately make these determinations?
Are you, do you mean the developer themselves, or?
No, the groups that are reviewing these plans that come in and the like. How are they competent to essentially do that kind of review?
Well, the state is putting together a guiding document right now. It's a BNP clearinghouse, and it has all the standards, way, standard ways that you would put together a rain garden. I, myself, I've built several rain gardens for the city. We have other people on staff that have helped design them. We have Ben Thompson, the city arborist, who's very adept at doing those. And so, we do have the technical expertise here in the city to review plans when they're permitted, or when they're submitted to us. permitted, or when they're submitted to us.
But don't you, I mean, wouldn't you need a consultant of some kind to say, well, your percolation rate is this for this soil? And so, I mean, do you have some consultant that certifies to the city of, you know, and a lot of things, you have outside experts, like engineers, make certifications, the city doesn't do their own analysis, they rely on a third party. Is that what's happening or going to happen in this circumstance?
So if, if somebody proposed to me a rain garden, one of the key features of it would be, does the soil perk? And they would have to provide a soil report that said so. And to, I'm sorry, the developer. And so they have to get a qualified engineering firm to submit a report to us that says that this soil is suitable for this type of best management practice. And we review that, make sure it meets the minimum criteria in what they're setting out to do. And then, as time goes on, every year, we have a BNP inspection program. And rain gardens and infiltration trenches have observation wells in them where we go out, we look after a rain event, and we expect to see water in there, because water should be going in after a rain. And then we come back within 48 hours and that, that should be empty when we look in that pipe. If it isn't, that means there's something wrong with the underlying soil, or maybe during construction, they have some sort of siltation issue. And we have best management practice agreements on these sites. And so if they fail to deliver in what they're designed to do, there's the complete authority here to hold somebody responsible to get these sites into compliance, because it comes in condition on the development.
So you said that there were going to be state standards, they were going to essentially have a set of standards they would issue, and every locality in the state would essentially follow those standards?
Yeah. Some groups, Fairfax County, I can think of, in the past have modified the state handbook to their liking because of soil, and David looks like he knows why.
No, I was just going to add in there that the Virginia BNP clearinghouse is now the standard all across Virginia. And in fact, it's becoming more standardized. It had been that localities like Falls Church, or Alexandria, Fairfax, had a little bit more leeway to experiment and provide their own guidance, their own pollutant removal efficiencies for innovative BMPs. They no longer have the ability to do that. Those are all things that are vetted by the state and are included in this BNP clearinghouse. And in the same way, whereas you all had a lot more authority to take away tools that you thought were inappropriate, in the same way that if you want more stringent water quality standards in your ordinance, if you think a tool is inappropriate for the City of Falls Church, you also need to justify that to the state. And so the state has really standardized the specifications that they're using so that, you know, when the engineering community looks at that, they know exactly what to be expecting.
So it might say, you need six inches of sand, you know, two inches of crushed stone, or whatever it is, for a rain garden. Okay. Let me ask you, I'm not sure I understood how the BZA, what the BZA's role is in this. I know they are for zoning issues, but in terms of the stormwater side, do they have any responsibility for the stormwater side of this?
So what we've done here is we've tried to distance stormwater quantity and quality concerns away from any aspect of zoning. My understanding is, and Wyatt will talk about that next, is that there will be something to backfill that position. Currently, plans are reviewed by the zoning administrator, and so he'll be looking for whatever standard is chosen for impervious cover.
So right now, the zoning administrator reviews it because it's in zoning, it's under his purview, the section right now. And so if he, someone finds there's an error to that, they can challenge or appeal the determination of the zoning administrator to the BZA. And I guess what you're saying is that's going to be removed, it's going to go to a new chapter, and that chapter will not be under the zoning administrator anymore, but the Director of Public Works. Is that why it's shaking, is that, it sounds like?
Yeah. Right now, it is in the zoning ordinance, but under the Chesapeake. And so the Chesapeake appeals process is through the planning commission. When we move those provisions over to the new stormwater chapter, it will be out of the zoning ordinance, all the stormwater regulations will be out of the zoning ordinance, and the appeals would be first to the city manager, then to the city council. On the 35% impervious coverage, however, if the desire is to still keep that as a hard cap, that would then be new in the zoning ordinance, where it doesn't exist right now. And it would become something that the zoning administrator enforces. And so then that becomes something that's appealable to the BZA, as the zoning administrator's determination. I will say, if we could make a quick segue into that item, that the request is to, tonight, and the council will make this decision whether you're ready or not, but to move forward with the stormwater regs on first reading at your next meeting a week from now, but allow us more time on this 35% hard cap to work with the planning commission and the BZA on the language of the ordinance, and then bring that back to council in September. And then potentially, that ordinance can catch up to the stormwater regs in October. But I will say that the 35% hard cap is not as clear-cut as it might initially seem. I think it is worthy of some additional study before the council takes action on first reading on it.
One last question. The little chart here, it talks about the state standard, provide the local option to have single-family homes that disturb less than one acre. We don't have any of that in our proposal, is that correct? We're authorized to do so, but that's not any part of what we're going forward with. You're not recommending such an exemption, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, because doing so would allow additional impervious cover that we have to mitigate later.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I have a small point and a larger one. When you say everything but stormwater runoff is considered illicit, what about watering your lawn, or washing your car? What kind of discharge were you thinking of that would merit being called illicit? I don't think you meant that somebody watering their lawn would get fined or anything like that, right? Or am I wrong about that?
Technically, anything but stormwater is considered illicit discharge.
So people will be told they can't water their lawn?
No. Oh, wow.
If it's running off your site.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that would be the, well, look at the standard, but good luck.
If, if, if I could clarify that, it's, includes, this is no different than what your existing stormwater management, your MS4 permit has in there. So there are firefighting activities is the biggie. You are allowed to still wash individual cars in front of your home, and so that's also an exemption under, under state code. Just because you have wash, or sprinkler system, and that's washing runoff off of your, off of your property, that is not considered an illicit discharge. Now, if you were to fertilize your yard, and also fertilize your driveway and your sidewalk at the same time, and that gets washed into the storm sewer, technically, that's an illicit discharge. Now, you're correct, you'd have to take that to an extreme and actually catch somebody, but that's kind of the differential.
Thank you. Not to worry, I personally have no intention of doing either, but it was just sort of general, a general question. And on a bigger issue, and maybe I've missed something all these months, but we, if I recall, we may, or tried to establish a difference between stormwater and the runoff, you know, the flooding, and the quality of the water. Now, it's completely relinked, so I'm having a little trouble understanding. Let's say, for example, I can, or the city can take care of the quality issue and still have flooding. I mean, where, how is this managed? I'm trying to put the two together, but I'm not seeing exactly how it goes.
Well, when we talk about water quality, we typically think about the first flush, which is about the first inch of rain that falls from the sky. And that carries the pollutants that are found on our impervious coverages, the oils, greases. When we talk about quantity, we're talking about cycling a storm through some sort of structural practice, which is massive quantities very quickly. And so what this ordinance does is it gets to both points. It says, here's how we're going to treat for quality, and here's the new playbook for quantity. And they've tried to marry the two together so that you can kind of get practice, or benefit out of doing infiltration practices, is the way it's kind of set together.
Go back and posit a case where I take care of my quality issues with X amount of stormwater relief, but after that's done, I still have stormwater problems. Would you stop after the quality issue is taken care of? Or is the stormwater independent in the sense that that's a problem that has to be resolved, even if the quantity is already resolved?
From, from my standpoint, when I'm asked to look at a problem here in the city, it's usually about flooding. That's my first priority. If you recall back to the watershed management plan, we ranked projects based on certain criteria and safety was number one. And so that's flooding. And so when I look at a flooding project, I also think, well, I need to do a tremendous amount of work in water quality. How do I build both practices together? And so where I have a containment structure, I'll also try and do a filtration practice.
So, but you could, technically, you could solve the stormwater problem in terms of flooding and still not solve the quantity, the quality problem?
That's correct.
And what happens if that occurs?
Well, I would say that in some cases, you can have limited space. And so if my primary mission in that location is a flooding issue, then I would solve that and I would get my quantity, or sorry, my quality control somewhere else. Yeah, sure.
The way the system is designed is really to focus on and encourage infiltration, because the most efficient way to get both volume or flood control and also the water quality control is to infiltrate it. Because when you infiltrate it, you get both things out of there. And so the way that the new state regs and the new standards are written, it encourages folks to do that, because it's usually the most cost-efficient way to get at both of those issues.
Fair enough, but behavioral activities and what we would like to see, we're all supposed to eat better, we're all supposed to exercise more, and at the same time, we get fatter, need more blood pressure medication, et cetera. So it's fine to theoretically link the two, but I'm still struggling a bit. We can declare that infiltration is the way to go, but it may not turn out that way. So I'm still struggling a little bit to see how both components of this integrate. And it would seem to me the most obvious one is the stormwater control, but that may not take care of your infiltration problem. It may not take care of the quality issue at all. I'm just not sure. Maybe it's there, but I don't see exactly how it meshes together in terms of priorities and impacts.
And I guess would just say that the regulations focus on both of them. And so you have standards for both that need to be met. There's usually a most efficient way to go at that, but it is site-specific. And so if you want to take care of water quality through one means, and then use detention on site to take care of flooding, you can. But the state standards are the same, and they're pretty stringent with regard to both quality and quantity. It's up to the developer to figure out what the best way to do that on site.
Maybe, maybe that's the key there for the projects going forward. But it seemed to me for the people who have stored water in their basements, they're not going to say, well, you can continue to have it in my basement pending the ability to get the quality. Not going to say that. And that may cause problems, because the water that is ushered out of the city may not yet have met the quality issue. I'm just, there's different groups and there's different priorities within the city. How, what do you do?
I mean, I can say that I'll, based on the way that we've laid this whole program out, is that safety is our number-one concern. So if somebody is getting water in their basement, that's where we would address that. If there is room for some sort of treatment practice, we're definitely open to doing that where we can in a cost-effective manner.
Thank you.
The one, the one question that I have, just as we move forward through this process, I think the key aspect of this for our citizens to understand and boards and commissions to really focus them on is what the state mandates are and what we're doing that's different or above and beyond what the minimum requirements are, and really focusing and on getting input on that. So I think that's, that's one way of addressing it. The other is educating our citizens about what the state mandates are as they gear up, because there are no choices in that sphere, other than getting the fines, et cetera, which, you know, and all the, all the sticks that go with it. So if we can sort of try to have that discussion focused around those parameters, I think our, our community may be better able to understand and grasp what, what this is. Does that make sense to folks to try to start looking at it this way as we start engaging with boards and commissions and our citizens about this, is thinking about it that way and at least beginning to have the discussion that way?
Daniel, I think it makes a lot of sense to try that, but maybe we have to be, excuse me, have to be as they, as they do in politics. If the first approach doesn't resonate, then we move on to something else. But certainly, it makes sense to do that, start out that way.
And I think we sort of did that tonight, but I think really focusing it that way may help.
I, I agree with that point. Over the course of the years, I've had these sorts of categories of complaints about the current approach. And I think we need to keep these in mind as we redesign it. From some owners, I've heard that the process is entirely too elongated and entirely too costly for relatively minor changes that they're making to their property. In other cases, I've heard from neighbors, the process is too fast, they don't have an opportunity to input, and the whole appeal, not appeal, whatever, is just a total mystery. The third thing I've heard, and this is about the 35%, from an architect in town who does a lot of very tasteful renovations, is that there are some things that we're doing in terms of tree canopy and lot coverage that are actually having the exact opposite effect of what they're supposed to have. Now, we can, we can, as we probe that piece of it and we focus more on that, I want to bring that expertise to bear. But these are the kinds of things that I'm hearing from the citizens. We have to be careful that we achieve our objective, but it doesn't like we're putting homeowners through a lot of hoops and that we don't tie up owners indefinitely. At the same time, we've had problems with very drastic things being done to lots that would affect others, and there hasn't been an adequate opportunity. So I don't know how to resolve all these things, but these are what I've heard about various things that have occurred here. And if we don't address each of these, I think we'll be falling short of what our citizens want, in addition to achieving the environmental objectives. So I just put those out. We're relatively early on in the discussion of some of these things, so it's important to figure out, okay, what are our objectives? And I think these complaints that I've heard help move us toward what some of our objectives ought to be, and how to actually do this.
Anything else? So are we ready to put this on the calendar, this aspect of it, for Monday, and at least begin the discussion with the community?
Sure.
I think there's probably a lot more weighing in before we kind of get our heads around it. All right, so we're on?
Mr. Mayor, if I might. One of the issues here is that we know that if you make significant changes, you have to go back through first reading. And I frankly don't know what the best process is here. Do we go to first reading and recognize that there's going to be a lot of dialogue and a high likelihood of significant changes, in which case we have to go through first reading? Or is there a different hearing process? I don't know.
The, John Foster is upstairs with the planning commission on the substandard lots issue right now. Mr. Bulova, do you know in the state enabling language, sometimes in state enabling language, there's code in there that allows for changes between first reading and second reading to allow for the public input. But I'm sort of putting you on the spot on that question.
Yeah, and in terms of the stormwater management regulations, there's nothing specific in there that would address it for these circumstances. And I'm sure there is in other parts of the code, but it's not spelled out in the stormwater management regulations.
Well, I guess to address the question, and I will just say, Vice Mayor Snyder's comments are very familiar to all of us. And I think if you polled the people at the permit counter, the comments nine to one would be that the process, boy, they wish it were, you know, faster and less complicated. But from the city manager's office, in terms of the comments that I- But from the city manager's office, in terms of the comments that I get, nine to one are from the neighbor's perspective saying, geez, it goes, it goes too fast and I feel like I don't, there's no way for me to weigh in on this. And the truth of the matter is, this is a ministerial act, even with the new, it's, that's the way it is right now, and that's the way it will be with this new ordinance, that the neighbor's involvement is to be informed and they can provide comments, but it is not a process where the neighbor's views are solicited. It's, it's one where they can get informed about what's happening in their neighborhood, but this is a ministerial act between the regulator, which is the city, and the property owner and the developer. And you follow the code in those cases. And there can be some negotiation to try to produce an outcome, but at the end of the day, if the developer's following the letter of the law, that's what holds the day, not negotiations trying to push them to do further than what the law allows. In this ordinance, as Jason has laid out, we are trying to clarify and streamline the code, so that there's, there's a one stop shop. And so it actually is easier for the developers to understand what the rules of the road are and for the citizen, because there's one code section, they can see what that is and, and they'll understand that process. The, so our, our belief is that between first reading and second reading, there is the opportunity to get public input and to improve the ordinance and that that would not, unless it's a drastic change, would not trigger, trigger second reading. And, and so we're anticipating that happening between first and second reading. And if it does, we think that we'll be able to stay on track.
Could I ask just one more question? So if someone who is a homeowner does not commit any land disturbing activity, then this is not in any way impactful on them, is that right?
Yes.
And even if they have stormwater issues in their yard that are quantity related and maybe quality related too, but even if they do, there's nothing in here that is going to require or force or compel them to do anything about them, is that right?
That's correct. Unless they're disturbing 2,500 square feet of soil, then that's triggers the, the city's regulatory response.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Anything else? All right, let's move on to the next item, which is the 35% cap, right?
Okay, I've given a, a brief overview on that. The only thing that I would add is that in the ordinance that's before you, there is a definition of what impervious is and is not. And we don't currently have that. And except in the stormwater context. And that's, again, all about quality, not about quantity and, and the existing code. Getting to your, your question. What this definition would stand for is that impervious surfaces include non-vegetated roofs, buildings, streets, parking areas, sidewalks, driveways, and any concrete, asphalt or compacted gravel surface. A pool, for instance, is not in this definition, so that would not be treated as an impervious surface. There is a process here also where the imperv, and, and line 64, for zoning purposes, the square footage area of an uncovered driveway, walker patio that's composed of pervious materials may be reduced by 25%. So in effect, you get a credit on your impervious count if it is semi-pervious. So those are some things that we've put down on paper just to begin the discussion. Some cautionary notes on this is that there is room for a lot of confusion with this being in the zoning ordinance. One thing we're trying to do is to clarify and to simplify. And if we just go with stormwater regs, then that's one rulebook that everybody will follow. And I think it will produce a good outcome in terms of density and in terms of the other things that the planning commission is concerned about. But nonetheless, I know from speaking with Mr. Snyder that the planning commission is very interested in this, in this policy discussion. And so we wanted to be responsive to that and initiate the dialogue with them with the draft ordinance in front of us.
Anything on that, Eric?
But I would like to just repeat, I've understood, you mentioned, Jason, that the number one priority is safety. So that would override the other considerations. That has to be assured number one. In stormwater.
So the only requested on this, request on this is no formal action, but if, from the council informally at this work session, if there's consensus for staff, then to continue to work with the planning commission and come back in September, and I believe that would be September 16th, with, with a more refined ordinance or perhaps a, a different approach on this policy with the benefit of more dialogue of the planning commission and the BCA. So that's the only request on that.
That makes sense.
So Wyatt, this is now because the stormwater's sort of been pulled out to a different section. The question you have for us is, do we retain this as a zoning matter? Not for stormwater quantity or quality, but merely, do we want, you know, bigger houses, giant houses on our lots or the like? This is sort of really a different category of thought.
That's right.
Than what we were talking about the past hour or whatever it's been.
That's right.
Okay. But you still want us to, this would be considered in the same connection with what we're also discussing, or this is sort of pulled out as a separate matter?
There's the opportunity under this procedure for the two streams to get merged back together, if you will, by final adoption on October 22nd.
If we were to not adopt anything with this, would that mean essentially there is no limit to lot coverage, other than setbacks?
Yes, if the stormwater ordinance were adopted per the state regs, then there would not be a hard cap on impervious coverage on R1A and R1B lots. Instead, what you would do is you, you would have an engineering solution to treat for the stormwater issues, but you could have grades of 35%.
You'd have a Cistern or whatever, something below grades, got a filter, and you can take care of your stormwater runoff and quantity and quality, but yet aesthetically and for whatever reason else, you could have a pretty doggone high lot coverage because all you have to deal with is your setbacks.
That's correct.
All right. So I mean, I think it is something that we should definitely, in my opinion, have some discussion, get some input from the planning commission, planning staff. But it's a significant issue, I think, that hopefully we don't sort of sweep one of the rug. I think it deserves definitely our consideration.
Others? All right, let's move to the next one.
So then the last one is the establishment of a stormwater credit program task force. And we can keep this one quite brief.
As Wyatt said, just briefly, we're following up with the ordinance that the council adopted back in, I believe, June to create a stormwater credit program for the utility fee. And not to rehash too much of that, about 30% for water quantity, 30% for water quality, and then another 10% for a SWIP on the site, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. So we basically set the framework for this. And at this point, we need to flush out some of the details. And under that ordinance, 1898, there was a discussion to have a credit task force created. And so what I've done here is, this is a proposal for what that group would look like. The seven members on the right hand side of the screen are based on how our impervious coverage is laid out in the city today. So each group has their kind of share, so it's kind of splits it evenly across it. And then as well as taking some of the members from our boards and commissions and coming together for a 10 member group that we hope to tackle the issues very quickly, because this is important to the stormwater rollout as we get going. I'm already fielding a fair amount of questions about how do I get my credit? And I need to answer that question in, in some good detail.
So one thing that is a little bit unusual is we're asking in the resolution if the council charter it and lay out the criteria for membership, but then allow staff to recruit for it and, and fill, fill out the membership of the task force. Typically, the council would make that appointment. But if we do that and run it through the appointments committee, it's likely that the group would not be underway until September. And our concern is we need to get working in August and September and be wrapped up in October. That's our goal. So just wanted to highlight that that's what we've proposed here and be happy to discuss that with you in terms of what you think the best way to proceed is.
Johanna, another one?
I, I just wanted to understand the, the tenure of this committee, how?
It's, sun sets on December 31st, so it's meant to be task specific. And once the task is completed, the task force is disbanded.
And the specific tasks are a series of recommendations or, or procedure, or is it a booklet, or what, what happens? What's the?
So what they will deliver, Jason, is?
Yeah, I think what I'm really searching after is, is, might be a few ways to go about existing development that has a BMP versus how the new stormwater criteria might affect somebody getting a BMP. And so we need to flush that out. We want recommendations from that group as to how they'd like to see that, what makes the most sense. David is going to be working with me on this, and I'm sure he can expand a little bit more about what he's planning to present to us. David?
Yeah, certainly. Typically, you know, what this will result in is, is a formal policy that fleshes out what is it that an individual property owner would need in order to either get full credit or, or partial credit? And then in addition to that policy, it would be accompanied by some kind of manual, credit manual that is easily digestible by a, a property owner that would have the different forms for being able to apply for, for that credit. And so you'll have the more detailed policy that staff will use, and then you will have a credit manual that any property owner would be able to pick up and be able to understand what it was that they needed to do in order to meet a certain credit and how to apply for it.
And this is my last bit. First of all, I appreciate that you said flesh and you said flush.
Flesh out, flesh out.
Yeah. But I don't know, just, I just.
Couldn't resist.
Couldn't resist. The, the reason I'm asking about the tenure of this, of this citizen group and, and council group is because I'm keenly aware of the limbo in which the pedestrian plan folks are in, where this was a, a group of thoughtful citizens who came together to put together recommendations for council's approval. That plan hasn't gone forward, those people are still in limbo. You know, you're asking a lot of citizens. I just wanted to make sure, I mean, and I, I, I fully support the, the idea of having this group together, but I would really like to make certain that these folks feel that whatever plan or, or substance that they are to deliver gets received, gets delivered, gets received, and, you know, and, and then they get to go home. Because we've got some people who are still, I think, having worked extraordinarily hard and are still waiting to have, you know, some resolution. So I just want to make sure that this doesn't happen.
I was just curious, now, we had discussed tangentially to this was the amount that the credit would be, I mean, the overall amount of resources dedicated to credits. If it's not big enough, it's not going to be very interesting. And if it's too large, it's going to end up putting a lot of pressure on the people who don't or can't undertake it. What criteria, sort of a financial Goldilocks zone here? What criteria do you plan to use? Some of this is going to be dependent on how much money's going to be available and if that will grow over time, if it's expected to stabilize at a certain percent of whatever my interest, for example, if I were a homeowner would be, well, okay, what's in it for me in terms of dollars and cents, dollars and cents? If it's an elaborate process and I get 25 bucks back at the end of the year, maybe it isn't going to achieve what you want. Maybe another number's too high. How are you dealing with that issue?
I will say, in, in the creation of the, the credit policy, we thought to make sure that the credit is, has some sort of foundation, where did it come from, and that it matches in some way, shape or form what we wouldn't have to do in terms of additional projects somewhere else. It has a clear nexus as to how those come about. And I think David can expand on that a little bit.
Yeah, certainly. And, and the idea, because this is a fee for service, is, is you're not, not giving away credits, you know, it has to, has to match up with the public benefit that you're receiving. And so, you know, the, the framework that, that you all adopted that we're going to be fleshing out really was built on an analysis of, of your program, you know, which is about 30% of your program is, is water quality based. And so if everybody had a functional stormwater best practice on their, on their property and it was working well, you could avoid 30% of your costs. You know, same thing in terms of if everybody was, had a nutrient management plan or a stormwater pollution prevention plan, what did that mean as a public benefit? Same thing with the water quality, volume aspects. And, and so they're, they're, they're basically rooted in what is the public benefit that, that's being gained? And what the, what this exercise will do is, is ensure that the details of that plan match that expectation with regard to, to the utility. Right now, it is kind of what it is. We, we did some initial calculations, looking at what BMPs you already have in the city. You don't have a whole heck of a lot. And even if everybody was to take advantage of the, the credit with respect to their stormwater quality BMPs, it's, it's not going to break the bank. You're also correct that people will look very strategically at the long term cost of maintaining these for large lots with lots of impervious cover. You might have somebody say, yep, that's worth it. If I put it in, I'm going to recoup my costs over a specific amount of time and it's worth it to me financially. Other people look at it and say, you know, it's not going to be worth it. And so it's going to be an individual decision that's going to be made on the part of those, those property owners.
Actually, David, it's a little bit more complicated than that. The issue is, if I, if, if it's going to cost me $1,000 and I save $100 or $75, how many years is it going to take for me to get back my expenditure? But I got to discount that, you don't just don't add it up. It's how many years discounted and at what rate will make it worthwhile? And it could be a very long, long time if it's not enough. On the other hand, if people do it for other purposes. But I, it seems like it's not that intuitive on whether it's going to make sense to people strategically. I mean, they, will they understand that? It's like buying windows. You spend $30,000 for a new house full of windows and you save, wow, you save $150 a year, terrific. You're never going to recoup, but you may do it because they open and close or whatever the case may be.
Right. And, and you're right. And, and our, our job is to try to make it as intuitive as possible and to give property owners as much information as possible to make an informed decision. And some people will do it just because it's the right thing to do and that extra $25 a year, they're going to look at that and say, well, I would have done it anyway, so that's a really nice benefit. Other folks are going to say it's, it's, it's not worth it. But that's, that's the purpose of taking that policy and then putting it into a manual so somebody can actually do the calculation, see what is, what does this really mean for me and am I willing to make that investment and be accountable, quite frankly, to the city for maintaining these practices over time in order to receive that benefit back?
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, guys. So we'll put this on for another. Okay, we are on to the OPEP oversight.
Before you leave, just, there was a citizen who I think may have contacted the manager expressing interest in serving on that group that you're talking about. Jan Hirsch, Johanna will remember his name. He was on our towing board and just wanted to recommend him if people are looking for suggestions. He has an accounting background and he's involved in the Town Home, Townhouse Association where he lives over on Ellison Square, so he fits one of those boxes. Before you leave this, I, you know, this council has worked very hard on this issue and staff too, and I just wanted tonight, rather than Monday night maybe, to take note of something that was posted in the Falls Church Post, pictures of situation on Hillwood after the recent deluge. And, you know, so we await with less patience and understanding every time it rains, the unforciously delayed implementation of the newly enacted stormwater management fund and hope that our area will work its way up the priority list before a total disaster ensues. I just, you know, in terms of public messaging, I, I, nothing's been delayed, we're all working hard on this. And I just think that message needs to go out. Having said that, if, if there are citizens who, you know, have pressing and immediate problems they feel aren't being responded to, I guess that is something that we do have to worry about also. also. Just want to make sure people understand that what we delayed was the collecting of the money to pay for it immediately. But work has not in any way been delayed, as you can see from what we're doing here tonight. I just wanted to say that tonight.
Phil, on the recommendation of an individual, I don't know the individual at all, may be fantastic, but I wonder if it's a good idea for us to be making recommendations rather than going through a regular appointment because people may be discouraged from trying to, because they may feel it's already pre-decided.
Just wanted to throw, you're right, of course. All right. I just wanted to throw the name in there lest I forget.
All right. Let's move on to the OPEB.
There I am.
Yeah.
Right. The City Council has requested to adopt the proposed changes to Chapter 30 of the City Code and this ordinance is before you for first reading. The background is this. You established an OPEB fund in 2007. It is to be funded and handled very similar to the pension fund. What you did with the pension fund is you established a committee and they handle it. We have an investment advisor and they make our investments. When we get our actuarial reports, there are assumptions of return that are met and we receive reports from the financial advisor for the pension fund quarterly and we go through it. OPEB has not worked out the same way and we felt for it to operate and function as efficiently as the pension fund, that we should roll it up into that pension board so that they can handle it. The investments will be made by the same advisor and we'll reap those benefits. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer it. Again, this is, to us, it's an efficiency issue rather than have one pension board and a three-member committee of people that have functional commitments. It's better to just merge them all together.
All right. Does Finance Committee, Budget Finance have anything to add?
Great idea.
I agree. This is a very good idea. But just so everybody understands, these funds, would it be a separate fund within the purview of the Retirement Board? Would not be commingled with any of the other funds. So, that's important to understand that that's what will be done. And as a representative on the Retirement Board, the council representative, I can attest to the quality conscientiousness of the members of that board. So, it'll be in good hands. No question about it. Thank you.
Anything else? So, let's put this on for Monday. We're on to the reimbursement.
If you recall, Council, I came to you in the spring for a similar reimbursement as we have passed our CIP for FY14. We want to pass this resolution so that as we incur costs for those CIP projects, that we will be able to reimburse ourselves once the bond issue is done. Right? We do expect to have meetings with our financial advisor and we are looking at the fall for bond issue. It will probably be for both FY13 projects and FY14 projects. Is there any questions?
Anything on this?
Just a question. So, the City Hall, the rear of this, is that part of what's going to be bonded? Do I see that in the staff report?
Some portion of those costs will be incurred prior to bonding. Yes.
It talks about $3.8 million?
That would be the maximum amount. We didn't get into the detail of exactly how much we would be spending, but we just made provision for it.
Are we going to borrow that amount or is that going to be determined at a later point?
That is going to be determined at a later point. All right. What we did is we just put the total project cost in this resolution.
So, it's up to, not that amount?
Right. This is a not to exceed.
And as council recalled, we've committed to the milestone chart and I'm currently working on the architectural concepts. It'll come back to you before we proceed with the full bonding of the full project so that the community and council sees the designs first.
Yeah. So, the architectural's were a couple hundred thousand bucks if I recall correctly. And that's what would come back to us with whatever that comes up with. And we would vote on whether to proceed with that at that time.
Right. But we will be expending that money, so we need the authorization to reimburse ourselves. And the CFO has just done it for up to for the approved CIP project amount.
And I had, sort of following along the same questions about the preschool renovation, the folks over on Cherry Street, you know, when we had the meeting up at Mount Daniel, we're curious as to the process, you know, when is this going to be considered approved? What you just said is, you know, there'll be a public process of discussing what is going to actually be done there in the fall. Is that correct, what I hear you say?
For the Cherry Street preschool renovation, that public process and design will be managed by the school system, but it's the same concept. But they're certainly proceeding.
There's, yeah, right. The important thing that I'm trying to get across is what we're doing tonight is not deciding that. It's just setting us up to understand our options and consider it with the public.
It's a little bit more than that. It actually says we will reimburse.
Right.
It's a specific action that we're going for.
To pay money, is that right? To pay money for understanding our options. I mean, I get it that we're going to, you know, do things that cost money. Okay, that's fine.
Ready for Monday?
Yep.
And before we get to the next item, as previously disclosed, I own property 243 Gundry Drive and it's a prudential matter. I make this disclosure. And my wife is president of the Winter Hill Community Association that's commented at least on the hit project. So...
Yes. That's on the conveyance of 201 West Broad Street. Good evening, Council. This is the resolution authorizing the conveyance of 201 West Broad, commonly referred to as the Mailboxes' property. Currently houses two commercial tenants and generates about $33,000 per year in net revenue. Under the proposed conveyance, the city would be paid $300,000 for the property plus a parcel across the street in front of the Burke and Herbert property would also be conveyed to the city. This is pursuant to settlement terms with Atlantic Realty Company that you're familiar with. The key terms are a new development project that would include 201 West Broad and adjacent parcels. That development project would be 100% commercial, would include first floor retail, 80,000 square feet of commercial space, and is estimated to generate about $560,000 in net revenue conservatively. Would also include 30 public parking spaces in the redevelopment. And finally, the city and the city's public would have immediate use of the first floor of the George Mason Square parking garage on evenings and weekends. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
John, first off, stop me. If anything I ask you would require you to disclose something that is confidential. But so, is this, the terms that you just read, are they going to be set forth in restrictive covenant or something like that to essentially make these terms enforceable?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Is there a time period when the development has to occur or the property reverts to the city?
Yes, Mr. Snyder. The, it's basically a seven-year period that they have to redevelop. And if that is not completed, then it does revert to the city.
Wait, the...
No, I'm sorry. I misspoke. That, misspoke. They have seven years to redevelop, but the property would not revert. If they failed to redevelop in that seven-year period, we would get, the city would get an additional $235,000 on top of the $300,000 we're going to be paid upfront. I misunderstood your question. I apologize.
So, to fit this into the larger development context, we're agreeing to sell this property at somewhat below market value. Is that right?
I'm not sure I agree with that premise. We are selling it for $300,000. The tax assessed value, I believe, is about $550,000. But in addition to the $300,000 cash, we're getting a parcel across Maple that is worth about $250,000. So, the total value that we're receiving for the Mailboxes' property is about $550,000, which is about the tax assessed value.
Okay. So, actually, I'm glad to get that answer because that's a question we're going to get. The second thing is to put this in the right context is that this is really intended and hopefully to help bring about large-scale commercial development in that area, including parking spaces and other things that the city has been trying to get for some years. So, looked at in isolation as a pure property transaction, it makes sense. But when you look at it in the context of a longer-term relationship, hopefully with a good outcome, that good outcome is significantly to the positive if it all works in terms of development.
I think that's right. I mean, to put it another way, there are two benefits. There's the immediate benefit, which is we get roughly the tax assessed value for the property. Longer term, we do get potential significant redevelopment of that property and adjacent properties that, again, just the key points, 80,000 square feet of commercial space, 30 public parking spaces, first floor retail, no residential, 100% commercial. And so, all those are really the longer-term benefit to the city.
And that's the area where we've talked about having significant commercial?
That's correct.
Right. And then, okay. So, and this might enable other developments around the area as well?
It's, it is intended to really as a catalyst for further redevelopment of that part of the city.
Can we say for the public, where is the parcel across Maple?
It's a triangular-shaped parcel and we certainly can provide it to you in front of the Burke and Herbert building and it runs southeast, I guess, down Maple Avenue towards Annandale Road.
Thank you. And just to follow on what Mr. Snyder said, and you mentioned this too, I think, but settlement also resolves the city's litigation with Atlantic, setting us up for what we hope will be a productive and useful partnership going forward. So, that's an important part of what we're doing tonight.
That's correct, Mr. Duncan. It does resolve and settle the litigation with Atlantic, freeing up really the last hurdle for the Rushmark Project, also known as the Harris Teeter Project.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at when I asked about enabling other developments. So, I'm glad that's clarified. Thank you.
All right. Anything else?
So, the triangle you're talking about, is that, was that to be used originally to straighten out Maple Street? Is that...
That's correct. There was going to be an adjustment in the location of Maple and that parcel would have been used as part of that adjustment.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? Okay. It's on for Monday.
On for Monday? Okay. Very good.
All right. And let's, I think we, we're on to council comments and schedule. So, before we go into closed session.
Thank you. And I bear, as the forbearance of the council, because the Budget and Finance Committee, Johanna, I would like to make a recommendation to seek city manager and city to undertake an analysis of what to prepare for, a terms of reference for the hiring of an independent firm for the purpose of internal audit. Now, external audit, I think we're quite familiar with. We get this report from Brown Edwards. But internal audit is a completely different request. The external audit checks to see if an expenditure matches the invoice, to see if it was properly recorded. And it's a function of financial disclosure to demonstrate the accuracy and the quality of the representation of the information in your financial disclosures. Internal audit is different. It would look at something like, are there conflicts of interest taking place within the city? Is there nepotism? Is there, are there issues regarding the way contracts are provided, even if, even if they technically are okay? Are the representation of the contracts accurate? The newspapers today are full. Every day or practically every other day, you read about another problem, another scandal that's come out because of the lack of internal auditing, federal government, state governments, all over the place. They take many forms, many shapes. The key here is that in the next few years, I don't know, three, five years, we may be issuing bonds and undertaking capital improvement projects of over $100 million, $120 million. And we have no internal mechanisms to make sure that that money is actually being properly used other than the formal procurement procedures. So, this is for the city as a whole. It's not aimed at one group or another. But it's very important going forward. You always want to get in front of issues. You don't want to have discovered a problem after you lost millions of dollars in either fraud or waste or abysmal, whatever the case may be. The city is not equipped at the moment to undertake this function with existing staff. The, we received the, Matt, the external auditor's report last year and they had a number of recommendations. Really not, I'm not blaming the staff at all because people are really overwhelmed. But of the segregation of duties issues, a significant deficiency, maybe one or two items have been covered out of the six that were, you know, mentioned in the report. Half were the city, half were the schools. So, it's, this takes time. It takes staff. It's not something that we can ask our existing staff to do. You have internal problems. The CFO, for example, cannot authorize, initiate an expenditure, authorize it and then record it. There's complete lack of segregation. So, you would never do that. But there are other things that we do do that are not adequate in that sense in segregation duties. Not a big complaint. Nothing has happened now, but we've never handled this much money so quickly, $100, $120 million in a short period of time. And I think it's very important. So, what I like, the Budget and Finance Committee would like to ask the city manager to come back in a month or so. We've talked to other, you know, counties, other cities. Prince William has just issued a brand-new internal audit terms of reference. They have it. It's very common. Big jurisdictions have their own internal auditors. Smaller jurisdictions can hire an independent firm. So, it would not be an increase in staff per se, but hire an independent firm to undertake that function. I spoke into our external auditor. That's not something that they could do because it would be a conflict of interest for them. But they would be more than willing to review and take a look at something that we prepare to make sure that it's consistent with best practices. And that's what I suggest that we go forward. I hope that the council, we hope that the council will support this idea as a forward-looking approach to make sure that as we begin a major investment in city infrastructure, that we have these safeguards in place.
Other councilmen?
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I definitely support the recommendation. But I was interested in the claim that significant deficiencies have been found and have not been rectified. Mr. City Manager, can you comment on that either tonight or like tomorrow? I mean, that's a significant...
The term was significant deficiency that was used. And my question is, is that true and what are we doing to correct that?
Well, what the reference is to is deficiencies in segregation of duties and financial control because we have such a small shop. And so, that is a finding in most years in our audit, regardless of who our external audit is. That is an observation they will make and they will probably make that for any smaller jurisdiction. We have a finance staff of five. And so, we don't have the staff to have the segregation of duties. And so we don't have the staff to have the segregation of duties that you would, that you would like to have. That's what it's relating to, and we can forward to you our last audit that shows exactly what those findings were.
If I may, one of the things that we did do in regards to segregation of duties is we did hire that IT.
That's a very good point.
Position. And again, it took us a couple of years to, to get there, but we've done that. So we are trying to address the issues as they, they come up.
That's right. We did bring that recommendation to the council, and the council acted on it. And it was really in response to that segregation of duties issue.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned about the terminology significant deficiency because my understanding is that for smaller jurisdictions, this is something difficult to do. So I wanna get to, if there's a significant deficiency, we've gotta correct it. What I'm hearing is we've moved to correct that, right? The segregation. But, but this was a plural, and the comment was made that there are others. So I wanna, either there were significant deficiencies or there weren't. And then what are we doing to correct the deficiencies that were found, significant or not?
Joanna?
I, I think it might, might help, Dave, if you, if you just had a copy of the, of this management letter. Significant deficiency is, is industry terminology. It's important. It does, it, it, you should be paying attention to that language. I, I know in my own organization that this, the issue of segregation of duties is, is difficult when you've got, you know, three people running a, in our case, $2.6 million operation. But what we had to do was very much what the, the accounting staff has had to do, which is just, some people take different bits and pieces of it. But again, significant deficiency is, is, is terminology that is, is used by the, by the auditor. This should be paid attention to. I think it is absolutely council's prerogative to ask on an annual basis how management, you know, how the management letter is being addressed. So I think, I, I wanted to assure you that, that, that your, your sense of urgency is, is important, but that the language itself is, is just regular auditing terminology. But if you might wanna look at the next, the other, the other sorts of issues, because they do involve the Code of Ethics, the Aurora House gift cards, there are a number of, of pieces that I think we should, as, as council, be, be ensuring that, that, you know, staff has done its best to address on, on an annual basis.
Why don't we propose to do this, is get that out with areas that, why you're and Richard are working on, and then areas where it's staffing size issue that are likely to come up over and over again just because of our size. And just, point by point, just check off what remedies we put into place and what is just part of organizational structure that we may or may not be able to address.
Ira?
I did not intend to be alarmist about this. The idea was simply to indicate that even basic functions are a stretch for existing city staff. And by the way, half of the six points were raised pertain to the schools, don't pertain specifically to the city side. And again, it's the ideas to get in front of issues, and that, this was not intended as a critique. I understand how, how stressed short-staffed staff is to do some of this stuff. It was intended primarily to indicate that if we're having some stress undertaking our normal functions now, can imagine what it would be when we get some really large number of transactions to look at and a lot of contracts being issued, et cetera, et cetera, and a lot of players involved. Trying to get in front of that so we don't get a surprise in a couple of years with a headline provided by the news, press, no doubt. So indicating that monies have not been properly allocated or spent or something. And I don't have anything in mind specifically, but this stuff comes out as a surprise. It's, I can't believe that organization or that person did that. It never crossed my mind. This is what happens. This is the environment in which we live in, and that's why we should be in front of this. And, and I agree with the way Nader has approached, looking at.
My two cents on, on what Ira raised, I think it's a very good idea that, that we explore doing that and trying to have capacity to have an internal audit program. May not make sense to have it, you know, something that's internal to the city or a position in the city because of our size, but certainly hiring outside may be one way of approaching it. The other aspect of it is, given that a lot of what we're gonna be looking to its perspective, given the amount of money in contracting that's gonna happen, on the CIP side, on the water funds, should it pass, that are gonna be coming into the city, I think making sure that we've got not just a external audit function, which, which happens, but also an internal audit function is gonna be very, very important. What I would also suggest is having a discussion, why I may wanna explore this with Dr. Jones as well because it may make some sense that we both explore that because the schools are gonna be taking on a lot of projects with the CIP. So they may be interested in an audit function. Certainly, we're not in a position of dictating what they do on that front. But if there's some, if, if, if they're interested in doing that, there may be some, there may be some efficiencies about the firm, how it's handled, rather than two different potential audit, internal audit functions being done. Is that, so, if we, if, if council's on board with moving this forward, you can have a conversation with Tony as well, and I'll reach out to Susan.
And Nader, I'm sorry to go continuing this, but I had actually thought that this would be for the whole city.
Everyone.
It would not be an issue, you know, of, of one side or the other, that in the end of the day, just one group of taxpayers, we all pay the same. So whether it's the city side or the school side, it would pertain to all.
Ira, I agree with you, but it's not always seen that way. And, you know, we, we need to make sure that the schools are on board because I, I don't think that we've got, if, if they don't wanna open their books, I think we could have an issue, so.
Okay, we can discuss that, but I mean, that's, that's such a, where I was coming from.
And I absolutely share that. That's why I wanna reemphasize that it's gotta be a, a joint effort.
Could you say again the timeframe you're thinking of for this process?
I thought the city could take a month just to start to do some initial conversations with other jurisdictions, what are their experiences are, what are the issues that they've encountered? And with a view to begin to decide what kind of terms of RFP we might consider possible costs. But since we're not under the pressure of a problem, I, I think we have some time to get it done and done and properly because we're not doing it in response to an issue.
I, I, that's part of the reason I ask, but, I mean, I can't see this becoming a component of the discussion that we'll have in the fall about the referendum for all the reasons that several of you have outlined. You know, we aren't gonna be talking about a lot of money washing around. So I think, you know, in terms of messaging, it's important that, A, it's clear that, yeah, what you said, there's nothing out there that would cause anyone any immediate alarm. A, B, you know, we're trying to get ahead of any situation. And C, you know, we can assure voters that the big things that are coming down the road are gonna be well-handled, probably through some supplementary resource or consultant or process that's, that's the kinda thing you're contemplating, so.
Specifically, if I may, Mayor?
Yeah.
Specifically, you know, one of the things an internal auditor could do would be looking at the new enterprise stormwater fund, taking a look at that, seeing how that's operating. So it would be another, if people are concerned about the city mismanaging that or so forth, there would be another set of eyes to look at it. The issue of the OPEB that we just discussed, an internal auditor could have maybe looked at that a little while ago and said, hey, we can have an operational efficiency here, and wouldn't have been a burden on the staff. These are the types of things that an internal auditor's, there's business efficiencies, there's other things that can be done. And so that's why it's for everybody, it isn't just one, one group. Thank you.
All right.
So we will come. We will come back and, at your meeting in September with an analysis of best practices and options for proceeding on this, and a time schedule for proceeding on this.
And get the note out.
And if I might, action that needs to be taken now. I mean, if there's action that needs to be taken now, it should be done now. And I would urge some consultation, both at the board level and at the managerial level with the schools because this is new to me, and it's probably gonna be very new to them. So I think we need some serious consultation with the schools.
Anything else?
And also cost assessments.
That's part of that, that's part of that thing.
And then just one thing that I, that I have to report. I had a last-minute scheduled breakfast, quick breakfast with Susan and John from the school board as they were just recently selected in their first organizational meeting in July. So what, well, some of the issues that were talked about is trying to get the gang of eight working again, back, back on track and getting that moving. It's wide, if you can work on scheduling that. What I talked to them about is what I would do is just have a quick call with Susan before that just so we can have an agenda based on feedback that we get from the members, just so there's a tight agenda and we're not just sitting there twiddling our thumbs and there's a, an agenda for each meeting beforehand. And we just talked about their visioning a little bit, their visioning meetings, how they thought it went. And then just some other CIP projects that are coming up. Talk a little bit about GM and all that, where Cherry Street is, et cetera, as well. So, very good, just casual chat. All, that's all I have. Dave?
Can I do four quick things? One, I've been exchanging emails with Brad Janand, the historical commission, who reminds us that the city's 65th birthday is August 3, 1948. Oh, it's August 3, 1948 of our founding, so this is our 65th birthday coming up. I would see that as a big number birthday. And I've done some research over in the library showing that, you know, there were practice of having birthday parties or recognitions in the old days. I think it'd be a nice thing to do, to have something. I know it's late, but, you know, some proclamation or cake or something because that's a significant milestone in our city's history. Second, the city attorney is gonna let us know sometime pretty soon about what we are allowed to do individually and/or as a council on the water referendum. Is that right?
Yes.
That is correct, Mr. Duncan, and I can tell you that the research is completed. And I will be advising council tomorrow as to what you can and cannot say as individuals.
Thank you. In the same vein with you, some of the comments that we've gotten from the public about the split lot issue, which we'll take up next Monday, right? Speak to, you know, we're gonna file a suit, this is gonna be a lawsuit in the waiting. I'm just curious what we can talk about in public and what we shouldn't talk about when we debate that issue in terms of the city's legal position? I mean, are, are we allowed to go into closed session to talk about the legal arguments that we might make? Or does that all have to be done in public?
No, that's pending or threatened litigation. It is an appropriate subject for closed session. If the council as a body decided it wanted to go into closed session to discuss that, it could.
Okay, well, I'm not gonna speak, of course, for everybody, but there's just been a number of letters that have certainly threatened litigation. And I, I personally would feel constrained about some questions that I would like to ask if I thought they were gonna weaken the city's legal case. So I'll let you legal eagles figure that out. Lastly, I see on the worksheet that the year-end financials are due to be discussed on September 16 at a work session. Just wonder if it's possible, since we're going into recess in mid-August, if there would be any opportunity to get a first look, top-line information on the year-end financials so that we could think about it during the August recess and begin to talk with folks about it early in September this year. September starts early, Labor Day's on the 1st, the Fall Festival's on the 7th, I think. The community is gonna have a lot of things on its mind, and I just wonder if it's possible for us to get some read on the year-end financials before we go out in August.
One of the issues at, at the year-end, because the year-end financials are significant, and they tend to, you know, those numbers are important. We don't have the numbers until August and, because of the way that our fiscal year works. We, we're still getting revenues in through mid-August. Incumbrance are still, invoices are still being paid and things like that. And so there can be a fairly significant swing to right, you know, from right now, after we've closed the books, after June 30th, to the financial report that you would see in September. So I've got some caution about getting out early numbers that would be misleading. On the other hand, we wanna get information out as soon as we have it. So let me just turn to Richard in terms of your thoughts as to when we can have a financial report that, that we feel comfortable is gonna be fairly close to what you actually would see in September with her, with her final unaudited numbers.
August. I'll try to get them to you before you go in recess. All right. Again, keep in mind that anything that you get before August 16th is not gonna have all the encumbrances, and it may not have all the revenue. What we will do is we will give you some notes with the financials that'll tell you what we believe is outstanding.
Ira?
Appreciate your responsiveness. Personally, I would prefer not to get information if it's gonna be different than what we get in September. That's not a good idea to circulate numbers that then get changed later on because it creates confusion. These aren't like quarterly, this is a year-end number. So from my experience, you don't want different sets of numbers floating around one month apart. That's not a good idea because people start making decisions and coming to conclusions without having the actual number, personally.
I don't disagree with you. However, I will tell you that even the numbers you get in September are gonna be subject to the auditors adjusting them if they don't agree with something that we did. So, I mean, it's, um, whatever council desires, that's what we'll do.
Well, hopefully, there aren't many differences with the auditors.
I would hope not.
And the last thing you wanna do is restate your books. That's.
No, this is, this will not be a restatement.
I know what it is, but I'm just, you don't wanna go, any numbers you change are, for me, a bad idea.
Our traditional time for the year-end financials is in September, so that's what that date is. That, that's typically when we've done it. So I think the question is, if we were to use some discretion to try to, I use this word, maybe it's the wrong word, but massage the numbers.
It's definitely the wrong word.
To get them close to where the.
Notes to the.
Where they'll be in September, we could do that earlier, but.
I think if, if the notion is that we're gonna end up having two sets of numbers coming out, that, that, that is, with all the caveats and the notes explaining that there's all these variables, having a number out and then having to explain why the number is different the second go-around gets lost in the mix. And if our standard is having it in September where the numbers are more firmed up and less notes, that may be the way to go. Now, if council members are interested in getting that information, I'm certainly open to it, but I'm not interested in having to explain why the numbers are different. I don't know if that's productive or not. It's my view. If other council members feel differently, they can ask for the numbers, and I'm not gonna stand away in the middle of that. But I'm not gonna be out there explaining it either. So Phil, if you want them, you can have the job of explaining why the numbers are different.
This councilman would be happy to work with the CFO and get whatever information seems reliable. Based on my experience, first time through last summer, I think the August numbers we had and the numbers that we ended up with after the auditor finished were, you know, certainly close enough for reasonable discussion. I'm just a slow learner, you know, I just need a little more time in August to sort of think about these things.
All right. And the one point that I also wanted to fill up, just to touch on that Phil mentioned about some of the comments that we've gotten regarding the split lots and the legal issues and legal challenges. I believe, John, you had provided us a memo that addressed some of those issues. But it may be worthwhile, given that we've had some recent comments along the same line. it may be worthwhile, given that we've had some recent comments along the same lines of legal challenges, if there is, if you can just take a look at those comments and see if that alters the previous memo, and perhaps for Monday's packet, resending that memo out with a note about your thinking, given the recent comments along the legal lines.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have been working on such an update, and I will get that out to council prior to Monday.
Two minutes on transportation, the Northern Virginia Transportation Authority. Two minutes, you can clock them. Recall that there are two pots of money, the 70% money that comes out of general taxes, and then the 30%, which you get if you've done an overlay, or you've spent a certain amount more in transportation than you have in average, and we're doing our best to qualify under the 30%. Under the 70%, there's a lot of political pressure to take all of that money and to pour it into a very small number of road projects in the western part of the region, which would mean smaller jurisdictions, I won't use an active verb, smaller jurisdictions would not do well under those circumstances. So I want you to know that we're working in a variety of ways. First of all, the legal committee that I chair has concluded that the list of projects, including those from Falls Church, are entirely lawful under the statute. The second thing is, we're working with our colleagues in large and small jurisdictions that feel the same way we do, to get a fair result from that standpoint. But there are some other meetings and some other things that are going on, so this is going to be a multifaceted effort to protect the city's taxpayers in terms of getting some return from this out of the 70%. So this is just a heads up, if anybody wants to follow up in more mind-numbing detail, I'm certainly pleased to numb your mind, but that's kind of where it is right now. And there's a meeting next Monday night at 6:00 at VDOT, where of a legislative committee that has expanded on its own its jurisdiction, and a lot of the advocates for these very limited projects are going to be at that meeting, so I may need to attend that, wanted folks to know. But this is a multi-layered effort to protect the payments that our citizens made, so we don't have a repetition of the school funding formula, but in transportation. So that's it in a nutshell.
Thanks, Dave.
Just on, Dave, was there any commentary, maybe not on this committee book, for the Harris-Teter project, there was something we were going to deal with at VDOT regarding the left turn, and we put in an application to them, do we have any results from that? About that left turn? We were sort of optimistic at the time.
Let me get back with council on that. I haven't gotten an update on that for a month, so I will send a note out.
Anything else?
All right. Why don't we, if there's nothing else, anything on the schedule?
Could I just make one request? Council, last year, you gave me permission to teach a class for Virginia Tech, and they've asked me to come back and teach that class again that summer, or this summer. And so with your leave, if I could put a resolution on the agenda again for next Monday, under my contract, if I have any outside remuneration, I need to get council permission for that, and so I would request that again.
Do we get it cut?
No, but you have to invite councilmember Kalen on municipal finance.
You're going to be a speaker here at one of our classes, yeah.
Yeah, I think you should have a council guest.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, I think it's, you know, this came up during the mayor's meeting, and I suggested Wyatt it would be appropriate to bring it to the council. All right, thanks, Mike.
All right, thank you.
All right. Upon.
I do have some reading material for council.
I was hoping that was us.
Yeah, this is you.
Really good stuff.
We have booklets on the new fund balance from GFOA, government finance, and long-term financial planning for local governments.
This looks like my August recess reading right here.
Richard, could you please ask, could you please have an exam that all of the council members, especially those that need the information so early, can have an opportunity to study for an answer?
Upon a motion made by councilmember.
Barry.
And seconded by councilmember.
Snyder.
Snyder. And passed by a voice vote of city council. Council went into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, or I'm sorry, A, yes, A1, discussion consideration of promotion performance, demotion salaries disciplinary, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, annual evaluation of city manager, city attorney, and the city clerk. Mayor Baruch, yes, Vice Mayor Snyder.
Yes.
Councilmember Barry.
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan.
Yes.
Councilmember Kalen.
Yes.
Councilmember Pepe's absent. Councilmember Tarter.
Yes.
And we're also going to be speaking, hopefully, about compensation during this section as well. So we're going out at 9:30.